There you go. Alright. Well, welcome everyone. We usually have two more people in the room getting used to that. Anyway, I'll write for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Getting close to paradise, Bill.
One day.
I'm kind of in a trance, I think, out here now.
Yeah. Oh, oh, I have your contract. I'll drop it off.
Thank you.
I was out of town Friday and I didn't get it dropped off, I'm sorry.
Okay, thanks.
I'm the middle man. Okay, so we will open up. Board of Health. And first order for Board of Health is public comment. Is there any public comment for Board of Health? I don't hear or see anyone. I think everyone on the line knows how to make themselves seen, so. So we'll close public comment for Board of Health and there is no business for Board of Health, so that will conclude for Bill. Moving on to Board of County Commissioners, we will have two public hearings today at 10 o'clock. One for to consider adoption of our overall economic development plan project list. And the other to consider approval of the Great Columbia Crossing Walk Assembly Committee. And we also will have a public executive session at 10:30. So. Opening up Board of County Commissioners, first order of business is, again, public comments. Does anyone have public comment for Board of County Commissioners? Mr. Spudman?
Yeah, I'm guessing that everybody's seen the articles and the reports and the news. Television reports about the sheriffs refusing to do interviews or cooperate with the Chinooka Turbur. I was just curious if anybody on the commission has any position on our sheriff's department deciding to cut off communications with our public entities.
We're, um, I don't intend to make any comment on that. I think we're gonna let them resolve that as they see fit.
I agree with that.
Okay. Alright. Is that it, Mr. Spudman? Thank you. Okay, is there any other public comment? Okay, hearing nothing. We will close public comment period and move on to consent agenda, which is items one and two.
I move to approve consent agenda items one and two, subject to adequate budget appropriations and all county policies.
I will second that motion. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm regarding the auditor's office, item three.
I move to approve the request to lease a Smart 1X7EW149 male center machine with a remote train included from Quaden Racing USA Incorporated on NASPO value point contract number CTR058809 in the amount of $492.32 per month for 60 months, be paid from the current expense fund, county auditor fund number 001200, subject to adequate budget appropriations, and we look to approve the by weight program agreement of Quaden Racing USA Incorporated and authorized the auditor to sign.
I will second that motion.
Alright, it's, uh, how was this on here?
Thank you, sir.
Um, kinda sounds like we just have a lemon postage machine there, Katie, is that correct?
Yeah, it's just to update our current machine. There's gonna be some new technology that's gonna be required by the postal service, so we're just kinda getting ahead of the game and our current contract is ending anyways, so just upgrading it.
You know, you'd have some issues through the last few months. I didn't know if it was just a, if it just gave up the ghost.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it, it's, it's got its issues on certain things, so it sounds like this new one should hopefully take care of some of those issues that we've been having with the one we have now, and, um, it's exactly, it's pretty much exactly like the last one. Just with the, like Katie said, the updates that are required now by the postal service. Um, and then actually too, I, they sent us the quote and this one is actually going to save money. It's cheaper than the last one, so we like that. We liked that.
Cool. Thanks, thank you guys. I, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm regarding sheriff's office, item.
I move to acknowledge the resignation of William Brian Newton, telecommunications effective August 14th, 2023, and I move to approve the request to hire four telecommunications Kingston local 252 non-commissioned vacant positions.
I will second that motion.
Do we really have an open approval to hire, or we just?
I think this is just ensuring that before budgeted vacancies that we have, there's full authorization for the sheriff's office to proceed.
Discover the base.
Okay.
That's correct. That's why I added that, and we're going to be, we're going to miss Brian quite a bit here. We really are glad that he came and joined us and we wish him the best as he moves on. He's going to be pursuing some opportunities that he has in another state, so just wish him the best.
Well, we do as well. Yep. Alright, thanks, Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm regarding Department of Community Development, item five. I move to approve the request for family medical leave for qualifying event effective August 26, 2023. Oh, August 7th. August 7th, 2023 through November.
Through October.
Forty.
So, yeah.
Life totally.
It is.
August 7th, 2023 through October 30th, 2023.
Yep.
I will second that.
Do I, do I have to say it? Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Technology doesn't always catch up with it.
Sorry. All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item six.
In Nana's defense, I probably count no one's been wrong proceeding, so.
Alright, here we go. I hope there's no more changes. Alright, I move to approve the promotion of Mackenzie Kek litter crew supervisor at a rate of $23 per hour effective August 10th, 2023, and the hire of Kai Hui litter crew lead at a rate of $20 per hour effective August 14th through August 31st, 2023, also to adequate budget appropriations.
And I will second that motion. Sean's here?
Yeah, so we're losing our current litter crew supervisor. She accepted a permanent job, so to get by these last couple weeks of the season, our proposal is to move the current lead up to the supervisor position to finish off the last two weeks of the season, and then also, one of our previous litter crew members, Kai, recently graduated, so he's over 18. It means the requirement to be a lead and has the experience he had from working the previous, the previous five weeks this year. So he's agreed to come back on for us the last couple weeks and act as the lead position.
So that'll work out.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm seven.
I move to approve the professional service agreement for on-call planning consulting services with DCG Watershed Incorporated to provide planning services on a needed basis with a monthly limit of $10,000, subject to adequate budget appropriations.
I will second that motion.
Yeah, so we're gonna have a shortfall here for a while and planning staff. And so we've reached an agreement with Watershed who's done a lot of work with us in the past in writing our current planning ordinances, so they're very familiar with our, our rules, and we can, we definitely need the help for the next few months at a minimum. So we're glad that they were willing to come on board and help us out when we need them.
Yeah, that's, that doesn't always happen, does it?
No, we're definitely grateful. It's the, the best short-term solution that we could come up with, given the circumstances, so we're definitely feel very fortunate that they're willing to help.
For sure, for sure. Thank you for arranging that, Sean. That worked out well.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm regarding public works, item eight.
I move to approve local agency federal aid project prospectus with Washington State Department of Transportation pertaining to project number CRP 1662 regarding safety signing upgrade project 2020 and authorized the chair to sign.
I will second that motion.
Okay, I don't see anybody in here from Public Works, but this is a. It's, oh, it's great, no, that's not. Oh, okay. Grace, are you there? Or Jennifer? Somebody.
This is Blair. I'm pretty sure they're both in a meeting and unable to attend this one, so, um, I just thought I would chime in and let you guys know that they probably won't chime in on that.
This is something that, the safety signing project is something we do every, I think it's a biennial thing, if I remember correctly. But, um, yeah, just the, the procedure we have to go through, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item nine.
I move to approve local agency federal aid project prospectus with Washington State Department of Transportation pertaining to project number CRP 1663 regarding safety guardrail project 2020 and authorized the chair to sign.
I will second that motion.
This is the same type of thing. This is something we get money for every, I think, every biennial, maybe I'm saying. I, I think I'm right on that. It doesn't seem like it's every year, I think it's, uh.
I think you're right too, Lisa.
Thank you. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item 10.
I move to approve local agency federal aid project prospectus with Washington State Department of Transportation pertaining to project number CRP 1664 regarding Niagara Walken Bridge replacement and authorized the chair to sign.
I will second that motion.
And this is a piece of the process we had to do, given the grant money we got that was no match, which was quite a coup. And, and Grace worked hard on that, so, so we will, I'm assuming we'll all say aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm 11.
I move to adopt resolution number 2023-056 and the matter of declaring that they intend to update the Pacific County road standards.
I will second that motion.
Um, this is just what it says, our intent to update, our road standards haven't been updated in quite some time, and we're trying to get into this decade and it was a little, and this is just a step we have to go to. I believe there have to be public hearings and things, so.
And Grace worked hard on this one.
She did.
She did.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm 12.
I move to acknowledge the intent to retire from Scott Corey, road maintenance technician two, effective August 31st, 2023, and want to thank him for his years of service and approve requests to post, advertise, and hire for local 367 union represented road maintenance technician one or two, all subject to adequate budget appropriations.
I will second that motion.
Scott's been with us for a little over 28 years and, um, he's a, he's a good operator and we, we wish him nothing but the best.
Yeah. Good luck.
You bet. Enjoy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I am 13.
I move to adopt resolution number 2023-057 in the matter of the temporary road closure of Kitchell Road, number 62520 from mile post 0.48 to mile post 1.7, beginning Tuesday, August 8th, 2023, and ending Saturday, September 30th, 2023.
And I second that motion.
This is, I, we just have to go through this process because they requested a road closure and we are not doing much work on this road, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, I'm regarding County Fair, I'm 14.
I move to approve the 2023 entertainment agreements with Noah Johnson in an amount not to exceed $200 and Dustin Adair in an amount not to exceed $1,000, approve both requests to waive insurance requirements to be paid from current expense fund, Public Works, County Fair Fund number 001.314 subject to adequate budget appropriations and authorize the chair to sign.
I second that motion.
Bill?
Yeah, just a couple more entertainers and I think that's it for the year.
Awesome. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item 15.
I move to approve the 2023 Pacific County Fair concession space use agreements with Willapah Valley Booster Fund, Wild Pines Coffee Company, Big River Suites, Chinook Indian Nation, New Life Fellowship, The Yellow Deli, and Copper Pedal, subject to receipt of insurance and confirm fair manager's signatures on all agreements.
I second that motion.
And I've got all insurance finally on all those. I got the corrected policy for Wild Pines yesterday, so we're good to go with all those. I've got a few more I'm still collecting insurance on. I don't know why I put on the form to turn it in with your form, because they never do.
Thanks, Bill.
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye. I'm regarding juvenile court, item 16.
I move to approve the inter-agency agreement number IA24312 with Washington State Administrative Office of Reports for BECA programs and services and authorized juvenile court administrator to sign.
I second that.
I don't see Scott on here, but this is just an annual renewal to stay on a program that's been around for a very long time. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item 17.
I move to approve consolidated contract number 2363-48791 with Washington State Department of Children, Youth, and Families effective July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2025, and authorized juvenile court administrator to sign.
I second that motion.
And this is again, the annual renewal of something that the juvenile court has, 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 it's just supposed to work by sometime. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm regarding general business, I'm 18.
I move to acknowledge the intent to resign from Grace Emerson Barncooke, county engineer with her last day in office as September 29th, 2023, move to approve request to post, advertise, and hire for county engineer position and/or contracting with engineering firm.
I second that.
We appreciate all the work Grace has done for us here.
Yeah.
And wish her nothing but the best.
She's moving on to pursue another adventure.
She is. Alright.
Thank you, Grace, for your hard work.
Yes, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And we're agreeing item 19 until the next meeting.
Correct. Item 19 was the potential approval of the new collective bargaining, bargaining agreement, the new CBA between the Pacific County Deputy Sheriff's Guild and the Washington Fraternal Order Police, the FOP, and the Pacific County Sheriff's Office. The reason for the deferral is simply to ensure that all of the tentatively agreed to matters within that CBA are properly reflected within the contracts, and then any subsequent formatting, page numbers referencing back to the table of contents are correct. Would rather do it right the first time and make sure that we don't have to then change anything through a memorandum of understanding and MOU, so just feel like we need to take a couple more weeks just to make sure again, formatting is correct in all of the matters that we had TA'd or tentatively agreed to within bargaining are properly reflected within the CBA.
Right, good. So, that's all the business on the main agenda we can include, so, we can do until after the public hearing, but we do have a couple additional items. Additional item number one is regarding County Fair.
The train, they step here very slowly.
Move to approve the temporary hire of following fair summer help. Elijah Parzese at a rate of 1575 per hour effective August 2nd, 2023. Ethan Luciere, Owen Sansom, Kylie Lehman, Ashley Payne, and Austin Kirkeo, all at a rate of 1575 per hour effective August 8th, 2023. Dakota Guernsey, Cory Hurley, and Chris Sturgill at a rate of 1625 per hour effective August 8th, 2023. Katie Southwick at a rate of 1620, 1625 per hour effective August 20th, 2023. All subject to adequate budget appropriations and successful completion of background checks.
And I'll second that motion. Yeah, we, it's really nice to see such a, such a good turnout for Fair Health. Last couple of years have been pretty tough, trying to find kids to go work. Oh, you're muted, Bill. You're muted, Bill. Bill, you're muted.
There we go. I muted and unmuted. So it's good, yeah, to get back to a full slate like we had years ago, so, um, yeah, some of them will be here, you know, not full-time before fair and then some are just during fair, but, um, it's great to have the bodies here and work getting done. There's a lot getting done right now. I've got people out there working, so thank you. It's really needed and it's gonna be very helpful.
Very good. Glad to see. I was pleasantly surprised to see all those names.
Yeah, so, so was I. It's like all of a sudden, bam, they were all there and it's like, yes, you know, we needed it.
Awesome. All in favor?
I'm at this.
Okay. Hi. Hi. Okay, one of Sturgis. Hey, um, I'm regarding general business, we got paid bills.
Move to approve vendor claims warrants numbered 166871 through 167005 in the amount of $155,338.38, subject to adequate budget appropriations and all county policies.
I second that one. They used to do that all the time. A lot of thirty eight's in there. There's a lot.
Dang it. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so we will recess until 10 o'clock, when we will have our public hearings, and we will conclude a slight amount of business after that, and then at 10:30 we will go into executive session for, I think, probably two hours, so we'll see, anybody that wants to come back at 10, we'll see you then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay. Alright, welcome back, everyone. Um, we are going to resume the meeting now and, um, go into our public hearings. The first one is item 20 on our agenda. And it is the public hearing in the matter of adopting the Pacific County overall economic plan development plan project list referred to as the WASSRT list and rescind resolution, oh, well, anyway, we're good to that. Um, sorry. Um, so first order of business is to open the public hearing, and then, um, I will need to swear in anyone that would like to give any comment during that public hearing on this particular matter. Does anyone want to comment on the WASSRT list approval, potential approval?
Good morning, Commissioner. This is Sue Yurku, Pacific County Economic Development Council. If any clarification is needed on the list, I'd be happy to make a comment, but I don't have any prepared comments.
Well, we'll just go ahead and swear you in, Sue. Is there anyone else that would need, thinks they want to comment? All in favor?
Also, just in case.
Okay. Alright, so, um, if you, if you feel you may have something to add to this, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that to the best of your knowledge, to us, when you are about to give this matter, is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
You know, okay, so, um, this is the point where we hear any comments on the list, um, and this is, um, the list of projects that are approved to have money awarded if they, if they put in an application for this, this calendar year. I believe. Isn't that right? Did I say that correctly? Okay. So if anybody has any, does any, do we have any questions about anything? Okay. Well, do you have any backgrounds that you want to just?
Sure. Specifically, the, the one comment that I'll make here is regarding the one addition that we have is the Willapah Community Development Association, the WCDA, the American Legion Post 150 Veteran Resource and Housing Center. It's being added to the OEDP list. We recently had a million dollar CDPG grant that was approved. Wonderful to get that project going. And there's some additional money hopefully to be considered going towards this project out of county funds, and the WCDA and this project in particular needed to be added to the list for consideration of. And this project in particular needed to be added to the list for consideration of those funds to be added. So a lot of good projects listed here, some recurring things that we've had, longer-term projects over the last several years. Some new things popping up. Incorporated within the various cities throughout the county, unincorporated projects. Uh. Good stuff all throughout. It's a page and a half long list.
Yeah.
Yeah, if anybody has any specific questions about any of the projects, I'd be happy to answer it to the best I can. But I wanted to call attention to the WCBA.
Yeah.
Being added in since that is new for this particular list to be considered this year.
All right. Yeah, this, I'm so. I'm, I'll just say that I'm so thrilled with this. We finally were able to. Get the point oh nine funds over the finish line at the legislature to get extended out, so we don't have to. Don't have to worry about them for a few years because they are vital to the things we do here in rural America, rural Washington, anyway. So, um, all right, if there's no other comments, I will close the public comment portion of this hearing. And, um, accept a motion.
I move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero five eight. In the matter of adopting the Pacific County overall economic development, development plan project list. Referred to as the WASSRT list and rescind resolution number two, zero, two, two, dash, zero, four, two.
And I second that motion.
All right. Um, once again, any ca, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. So that is done. Um, next we will move on to the next public hearing, which is item twenty-one on our agenda, which is to consider the assembly permit. Uh, application by the Astoria Warrenton Chamber of Commerce for the Great Columbia Crossing walk slash run. That will be held on October eighth this year. This year from the chamber.
Hi, I'm Isabel Dunn. I'm the Astoria Warrenton Area Chamber of Commerce's new community builder and events coordinator. And I'm really excited to be getting started. Hi.
I, I know this is really weird and archaic, but it's part of the rules and habits where you win. So if you could, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that to the best of your knowledge, testimony you are about to give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I always get a Perry Mason flashback when I say that.
That's right.
Bill's going, who is that?
I know, I know he is. Cool.
Great.
Okay. And give us your spiel there.
Yeah, of course. Sorry. Yeah, that's my long, uh, mouthful of a title, so. I'm, I'm chiming in from the Astoria Warrenton Area Chamber of Commerce where I just started in late June as. Uh, one of their newest hires. I'm their new community builder and events coordinator and I will be. And I'm coordinating this year's forty-first annual Great Columbia Crossing ten K run walk. So. We're really excited and, um. We have the same plan as we've had, uh, in recent years, capping, uh, the registration amount at thirty-five hundred participants. And our starting line is at the, uh, hi, thanks, Susan. Um, we, uh, are capping at thirty-five hundred and. We have our starting line at the dismal niche rest area in Pacific County and. Uh, the thirty-five hundred participants are bussed there from the Port of Astoria on the Astoria side of the bridge and the Port of Chinook on, uh, the Washington side. Fewer from Port of Chinook, but everyone's congregating there and then that. Race starts off and they're running, uh, I guess it would be highway, uh, four oh one. Before then making their way onto the Megler Bridge. Then they're out of Washington and out of y'all's hair by, uh. Around, around the start of the race time. It starts at around eight forty-five. So once they're on that bridge, they start to become Oregon's problem. But, uh, we're really grateful for you all and your participation in past years and are just very hopeful that we can continue this really strong relationship. And continue to hold the race with Pacific County at that start line.
You bet. Thank you so much. I don't know, but I, I have a lot of, I have a lot of friends that do that. Um. I don't.
I should.
I know. I want to, it's just because I know I can't.
Good, you just gotta keep the bridge closed a little.
Right. Well, we do have a sweeper bus, so you can take in the views and then hop on that bus and take the rest of the journey along your way. Yeah, get whisked away to the other side.
You can start e-bike, so you can have an e-bike version.
Right. Honestly, I, this is the closest I'll get to participating probably is planning the thing. I don't get to run it because I'm planning it.
Well, anyway, in, in all seriousness, thank you so much for, um, for the, the chamber over there doing this every year. It's, um. It's a very well-tended event and a lot of folks from our, from our county do it and, um. Thank you very much.
Yeah, so does the, uh, from the Washington side, they, they support the Washington side of it and then Oregon's of theirs?
Sorry, what was the first part of the question?
Uh, like ambulances or?
Yes, um, we're in the middle of coordinating, um. I'm in the middle of staffing both sides of the bridge with the necessary, uh, fire department, law enforcement, medics presence. And we have, I believe, A D, you know, in my first year learning it, I'm building on the established success of my predecessors and working with my really great team to ensure that we have the coverage. Um, that we had last year guaranteed that, but even beyond, just. Continue to shore up that coverage because we are aware that it is huge presence and we're going to be sure to staff it appropriately. And I'd love to keep this through line with, with whoever on the Pacific County side. It makes sense to. Keep in contact with as, um, those logistics unfold, but, uh, been working with, uh. Uh, we're hoping to loop in the Illwako Fire Department and. Uh, Chief Jeff Archer will be working with us to ensure the necessary support on the Pacific County side.
Oh, good. All right. Even questions?
Nope.
All right. All right, well, if that is all, we will, um. Uh, post-public hearing portion and I'll enter the motion.
I move to approve the assembly permit application as submitted by the Astoria Warrenton Chamber of Commerce. For the Great Columbia Crossing walk run to be held on October eighth, twenty twenty-three. In accordance with Assembly Ordinance number thirty-five B, subject to receipt. Of up-to-date insurance prior to event and authorize chair to sign.
And I second that motion.
Yeah. Um. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Isabel, for being here with us and.
Thank you.
On your coordination for this, it's, it's a good one.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we have one other item, uh, that had to wait until after the public hearings, which is item twenty-two.
All right, I move to approve the recommended point. Zero point zero nine percent local sales tax funds allocations. From Pacific Council of Governments dated June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three as follows. City of South Bend regarding the water treatment plant emergency project in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars. Pacific County regarding the American Legion Post one five zero veteran housing and resource center project. In the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars each, each year for two years. Joint Pacific County Housing Authority regarding the Alder House project in the amount of fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars each year for two years. City of Illwako regarding the water system upgrade project in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. The Port of Willipour Harbor regarding the Bendixson Landing Charge and Accelerator Project. In the amount of thirty thousand dollars each, each year for two years. All subject to adequate budget appropriations. And note, at this time, the board is not approving the Port of Peninsulas application for the marine reconstruction project. This project may be considered once all permitting has been obtained from the Department of Ecology.
And I will second that motion.
Okay. Some questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. So that, that concludes the, our, our regular business for, um, today. We will start. Our executive session at ten thirty, so we'll recess until then. And we will be in there. Actually, we have it advertised for ninety minutes, so if we need to go longer than that, we'll come out and let everyone know. So thank you all very much. Thank you.
Please do. You did all.
We are back in session. It's ten thirty. Um. And we will be going, um, the verbal now meet and executive session with purpose to consider the selection of a site for acquisition. Uh, real estate by lease or purchase performance of a public employee. And potential litigation is provided by RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one ten subsection one, B, G and I. We will be in executive session for approximately ninety minutes and, um, if we need more time, at that time, we will come out and let everyone know. So here we go. Thank you. Yeah. No, no.
Oh, yeah. We'll get, keep shared.
I don't have the, I don't know if it's okay. Okay. All right, um, we are coming out to let you know that we will be going back in for another hour. Um, we had several items we needed to discuss today, so, um, we will be back at one o'clock. Thank you. It is noon. We are back. Huh?
It's one.
Oh. That was an hour ago. It's one o'clock. Sorry. Um, we are back. We are done. And, uh, the decision was remained, so this concludes our meeting for today. Thank you.